It's called the City of Milton Common Council Meeting to Order on Tuesday, October 20th, 2020 at 6:08 PM because of the mayor's Zoom problems. Can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have an agenda and we're going to look over Inga's left or right shelf at the flag to say the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll just have Inga lead us.
Oh, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by common counsel? Is there anybody here, Inga, that you can see?
There is nobody here from the public.
All right. Approval of common council meeting minutes from October 6, 2020. Linda's motioning, Larry's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries. All right. What we wait for all year long, the presentation, discussion, and direction regarding the draft 2020 annual budget. And we have a slideshow.
Yep. So I'm going to share my screen so folks can see the budget presentation. Hope I thought I had it up.
I just wanted to say that Teresa's name is Mark instead of Teresa.
Yeah, it is.
Teresa, you're now the new Mark Schroeder.
That's my fault. I was trying to rename people. I went too fast.
Yeah. Oh. Oh, shit. I didn't get the picture taken in time.
That was recorded, too.
All right. So now we have a new process that at the beginning of the meeting, we all have to check to make sure our names are correct. Al, we're ready for you.
Can you see the budget presentation?
Yes.
Everybody can see it? Okay.
All right.
Hopefully, as I tab through it, it actually works. There we go. Okay. So folks can see the second slide now. It says 2021 draft budget.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So we're at that stage of the year where we are in the, I would say preliminary, but really we're not at the preliminary stages. We're really at kind of the final stages of the budget process. So as we've done in years past, we kind of look at the 2020 year that we just had and then, you know, get into the 2021 budget. Because obviously, a lot of things that happened in 2020 affect what happens in the 2021 budget. So as you can see on this slide, we had $27.7 million worth of increased equalized value in 2019. Budget expenses increased by 2.73% from 2019 to 2020. We improved about 12.5% of the streets in the city in 2020, and we had no new tax levy-supported borrowing in 2020. So every year, we have kind of our five goals for the budget process. We want a balanced budget, obviously, because we have to. We want to stay within levy limits because we have to unless we're going to go to referendum. We want to qualify for expenditure restraint because there is state aid tied to that. We generally don't ever want to reduce services. And if we do, you know, we want to make it abundantly clear as to why and what the impact will be. And we still are in the situation where we really want no new levy-supported borrowing. So those are the kind of the base goals that we establish with every budget. So in terms of the 2021 highlights for the budget, I'll start with the highlights and then we'll go through each piece and then kind of recap. In 2021, and again, although this is a draft budget, many of these things will not change. We know for a fact that the City of Milton will collect less taxes in 2021 than we did in 2020. So that means the city itself, the city as an organization, will be taxing its citizens less in 2021 than we did in 2020. General expenses only increased by 1.5%, which is down almost a percent and a quarter from last year. We saw $27.6 million in increased equalized value in 2020, which is higher than it was the previous year. This year, we're the second fastest-growing city in Rock County. Last year, we were the first fast, the fastest-growing city. So, you know, we've got our work cut out for us in 2021. And in this year, we propose no new tax levy-supported borrowing, as we've done for the last several years. So this is kind of just a general recap. Expenses went up last year, or the year that we're in right now, by 2.73%. And this year, we're only proposing a percentage increase of 1.56%. Contributing factors to the 2021 budget, obviously, cities' growth. In the state of Wisconsin, you're only able to increase your levy by what is known as net new construction. We saw net new construction of 2.152%, which equates to the ability to increase our levy by $55,000. So for $9.2 million worth of new construction, we're able to increase our levy $55,000. Obviously, we're not going to turn that away, but, you know, that's, there's a disproportionateness there. In that $9.2 million, there's several new homes, there's expansions to businesses, there's new streets, there's new extension of utilities. And for that, the $55,427 has to cover it. Expenditure restraint. Every year, we want to qualify for expenditure restraint. As I noted, there's state aid tied to it. With the expenditure restraint, we're only able to increase our expenditures by $139,000. And we're easily able to do that, obviously, with a 1.5% increase to expenses. That is not a difficult target to hit this year. For those folks who have been on the council for a number of years, you know, each year, it's always kind of, one year, we struggle to meet levy limits. The next year, we struggle to meet expenditure restraint. Those things are somewhat diametrically opposing. And this is one of the years where we can easily meet expenditure restraint, but are still in a position where we need to do some work in order to meet levy limits. And, you know, we always look at the affordability, developing a budget that maintains services as affordable as possible. For those folks who have been around for a long time, you've always heard me talk about the concept of can we do it versus should we do it? Many times, there's things that we can do, but it comes down to the question of should we do it? You know, an example of that is, can we borrow more? Yes, we can. Should we do that? You know, it comes on a case-by-case basis, but over the last number of years, we've felt that we should not borrow. So can we? Yes. Should we? We typically try to avoid that. And in this budget does that as well. As we noted before, Milton was the second fastest-growing community in Rock County this year. The city's equalized value increased $27.5 million. That's down a little bit from the previous year of $31 million, but that net new construction last year, I believe, was like 2.25%. So, you know, it's pretty similar. And again, levy limits are only able to be increased by net new construction. A lot of this stuff sounds repetitive. Some of it's for, you know, some of the newer folks on the council, some of it's for our friends in the media who may pick this up later, and anybody else who's kind of may watch this meeting later, to kind of understand that these are the important variables that we have to live within in order to create our budget. So I apologize for some folks, I think, you know, like Linda and Anisa have probably seen a similar presentation for seven years now. So. Levy limits, again, are a state-imposed cap on how much a city or a municipality can collect in taxes. Remember, levy is what the city, levy is kind of a fancy word for saying taxes collected. At this time, with the budget that's proposed and presented this evening, it does not qualify for, our budget does not qualify for levy limits. And we'll get into that in a little bit. It will have to qualify for levy limits by the time we adopt it on December 1st. So there's still a little bit more work to do on that regard. Expenditure restraint, this budget does meet expenditure restraint. And as you can see, what we've outlined below is kind of what's on the line in terms of if we qualify for expenditure restraint, there is state aid that is attached to it. And you can see that that number hovers right around $110,000 to $120,000 annually. We're projecting that number to be $113,000 in the 2021 budget. Well, I guess in the 2022 budget. Expenditure restraint means that, again, it's how much you can increase your expenses. We are estimating the ERP increase to be approximately 3.3% or $139,000. And at this time, it would qualify for that bonus or state aid for next year. So what does this all mean? The city's 2021 draft budget will levy to the max. In essence, in Wisconsin, you either do that or kind of suffer the consequences in future years. We wish there was ways that the state law would change to allow us to use kind of one-time fund-to-balance expenses. But once you leave it, it's gone for good. As presented on October 20th, 2020, this draft budget does not qualify for the state-imposed levy caps, but does qualify for expenditure restraint or ERP. A reduction of $12,534 is needed to meet the legal levy limits. So that is something that, over the next 45 days, we will have to trim that $12,534. And we'll talk a lot more about that at the end. What will the impact be? The city will collect less taxes in 2021 than it did in 2020. Again, I think that's an important thing to note, that when we roll into the year 2021, the city will be doing the same or more with less money than we did in 2020. And that, we understand that, and that's somewhat by design. Expenses increased 1.56%. There's no reduction in service, no new levy-supported debt. All employees receive the same compensation increase. And what that means is there's a level compensation increase throughout the entire organization. No one entity gets more or less than the others. And so far, the budget maintains capital infrastructure funding levels commensurate from 2020 to 2021. We won't know our final tax rate. And I know that sometimes there's a number that people kind of buzz about, but it's always important to note that the city council, irrespective of what budget is adopted, has no control over the tax rate. The tax rate is an arithmetical output based on equalized value and what the proportionate share is that the City of Milton shares with its aligned tax predictions. And it also is impacted by our assessment ratio. So although some folks may fixate kind of on the tax rate, at the end of the day, the common council, the mayor, Al, Dan, the county board supervisors, the superintendent of Milton have no control over the tax rate. It is a product of math, basically. What we can affect is the levy and how much taxes we collect. And we know we're going to collect less in 2020 than we did in 2021. So we'll break, we'll kind of get down into the nitty-gritty of the budget, but I'll pause at this moment, I guess, if anybody has any questions about what we've discussed so far, or what I've discussed, I should say, or what I've said. We really haven't discussed anything, but. Any questions from anybody? Okay. So one of the big issues, obviously, that we are facing as a municipality that many folks are aware, is that the 2021 fire department allocation. As we'll talk about later in the budget, we'll talk about aspects of the budget that are still unknown at this time. This is far and away the most unknown and most variable piece of the budget that still exists at this time. And we'll kind of get into why that is. We have a number in the budget, and that number is the number that's been discussed with the Fire Commission, but there are a number of pieces to that equation that still could change between now and the time we adopt the budget that will dramatically, that could dramatically impact this portion of the budget. So the city's allocation for the budget, or for the fire department, equates to about a $25,000 increase from our 2020 contribution. So that's what we have in the budget right now. That's what we know today. However, as folks are aware, there are kind of ongoing discussions with our surrounding townships that are, that contract with the Milton Joint Fire Department. And if those, each one, if each one of those townships kind of accept the terms of their new contract, this number does not change. But if any one of those municipalities decides to opt out and go with another department or change their boundary area, this number will change. And it's unlikely that this number, I don't really foresee a situation in which this number will decrease. It's much more likely that this number will increase, which will have a ripple effect throughout the entire budget. But as of right now, based on what was presented to the Fire Commission and presented to the other townships that are contracting with Milton Fire Department, this will be the city's contribution. The contracted townships are meeting at various times throughout October. I think Dan sent an email out last week or earlier this week. Every day runs together. Again, that will determine whether they'll continue to receive services from the Milton Fire Departments. If there are changes to the coverage area, the Fire Commission would need to determine how to handle the potential funding shortfalls. And again, what that means is, right now, we, you know, we cover 80% of Harmony and 5% of Koshkana and 100% of the Town of Milton and smaller portions of Lima and Johnstown. If any one of those variables change, it impacts the entire system and likely will result in an increased allocation for the City of Milton. May result in an increased allocation for the Town of Milton, too, but, you know, for the purposes of this discussion, we're really concerned about the City of Milton's budget. We've asked that each one of those municipalities, each one of those townships, provide a signed contract no later than November 16th. So by this time next month, we'll know that answer, hopefully even before our November 17th meeting. But again, it's important, and that's why we led with this. This is the most variable, or varied variable within the equation at this time. Any questions about the fire department, or how that allocation system works, or where the questions may lie? I think for the folks who are on the Fire Commission, they understand. But for those folks who aren't on the Fire Commission, that may seem a little confusing or maybe troublesome. But, you know, right now, I don't like to say this, but it is what it is. So that's what we know. Okay. Now we'll go into kind of the piece-by-piece of the budget. Obviously, we're not going to go line by line. It's, you know, it's a several hundred-page document, but, you know, kind of hit the major categories like we do in years past. So the 2020 tax levy was $3,411,097. The preliminary 2021 tax levy is $33,414,057. So somebody may say, right out of the gates, wait, I thought you were collecting more taxes or less taxes in 2021 than you were in 2020. And the answer is yes. It's because we still need to cut that $12,500-some dollars from the budget. So once we do that, our tax levy in 2021 will be less than it was in 2020. We see the, how that levy comes up is employee relations increased by $53,000, non-property tax revenue increases by $76,000, and operational expenses increased by $25,000, $26,000. What makes up the employee relations piece? There's a 1%. The budget is built with a 1% increase to non-protective employees. That basically means everybody who is not a sworn officer and, or covered by the union contract. And then the 1% contractual wage increase for all protective employees. There's a small increase to WRS for those protective employees, and as well as a minor change or a minor increase to health insurance. I know I reported back a few weeks ago that we did receive good news in terms of 2021 health insurance, that we only saw an increase of, I believe, 2.9%, which was certainly the smallest increase I've seen, and something we did not anticipate, but we're very thankful for. Non-property tax revenue. This chart is a little counterintuitive, but because it's revenue, and we're talking about how it impacts the levy, anything that is surrounded with parenthetical annotations is actually an increase. And anything that does not have, that is not kind of bounded by parenthetical annotations is a decrease. So we'll see an increase in revenue to our water utility, an increase in revenue from our state computer aid, a slight increase in revenue from other state aid programs such as shared revenue, a slight increase in road aid. We'll see a $60,000 increase to building permit, but as you can see at the bottom, that's going to be offset with expenses from the DPW budget. Because we have a contract relationship with our building inspections, every time a permit is taken out, there's a cost to that. We collect those dollars, and then 90-some percent of that goes right to our contract inspector. So in essence, we're kind of a pass-through. So there's a $60,000 increase in revenue, but there's also a $60,000 offset in expenses for the, for that revenue. All of this equates to about a $76,000 increase in revenue generated from non, not from taxes. Does that make sense for everybody?
And just quick with the building permits, that's just commercial, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Commercial is the old, yeah, how we still performs and maintains all residential inspections.
And then I think Linda had her hand raised on the previous slide. Did you have a question?
Oh, did she? I did not see that.
Yes. Actually, my question was on the previous slide, your WRS increase, does that include our firefighters that we just added?
I'm gonna, Dan, I do not believe it does, but because that would impact the fire department budget, but, yeah.
All this was is the state increase, the amount that, those that are in the protective class, that percentage went up 10 basis points. So that's, that's all that's reflective of. It was almost minuscule. I almost didn't include it, but since it's, since it's coming from the state, I felt the need to include it.
Thank you.
So operational changes in general government, there is an increase of $31,000 in expenses. The vast majority of that comes from information technology. That's basically everything from how we pay for our internet to our contract IT department through Agnitech and the support they provide. That number has increased to kind of historically match what has been spent over the last several years. Workers' comp liability and property insurance increased about $16,000. And our assessor services increased $14,000. Our contract assessor services increased $14,000. It's not, in terms of the assessor services, that's a part of the contract, but because we did not do the revaluation in 2020, we're anticipating doing so in 2021. And we will therefore pay for that entirety as opposed to spreading it out over two years. This provides us greater flexibility as we enter into the 2022 budget, which we'll talk a little bit about later. But that is going to be a much more challenging year than this year proved to be, based on the information we've received from Madison, in terms of that's when state aid will really be cut. And then you can see there's an increase in the fire department budget of, as we talked about before, $24,000. The police department doesn't get anything new this year. Nothing. I'm just kidding. But their budget's.
Oh, come on.
Until you gave them, Scott. That's your fault. No returns.
Just trying to hold the line. That's all I'm trying to do.
DPW will increase about $44,000 in expenses, but again, that's, the vast majority of that is due to that offset for contract building inspections. If it wasn't for that increase in revenue and then subsequent decrease, or increase in expenses, the overall operational budget for DPW would decrease by about 1,600, or about 16,000, I mean. And we're going to see a decrease in debt service in 2021. So our debt service number goes down 60,000. And that's ultimately why we will be collecting less taxes in 2021 than we were in 2020, because we're, more debt is being retired, it's coming off the books. We no longer have that credit card bill at the same level it was when we entered this year. So the, all those ups and downs equate to an increase of $2,900. And we know that that number still needs to be decreased by $12,000 before we get to the final point where we can adopt the budget. So when this budget is adopted, that number where it says total changes in increase/ decrease of levy will be a negative number. Any questions about any of that? There's only a few more slides left. So some of the pieces that we talk about every year, nonprofit allocations. What we've done here is kind of showed the historical funding that we've done for each nonprofit that has requested funds for the last several years. In the 2021 budget cycle, in accordance with council policy number four, the Gathering Place requested $15,000, the Milton House requested 10. We have built the budget at this time with a level funding of $10,000 to match what it has been for the last three or four years. So the Gathering Place did request 15, but at this time, in the budget, there is 10. Milton House requested 10, and it's funded at 10. And we also did want to point out, as we have in years past, that although these allocations are important, it is always important to note that there are other services that the city provides to these two entities outside of the normal budget process. Gathering Place gets regular bi-weekly payroll processing through the City of Milton. And over the years, the City of Milton has worked with the Milton House to provide them close to $40,000 worth of additional funding through building and property improvements. So I think that's important to note, that our commitment to those two entities doesn't just begin and end with this budgetary allocation. In terms of the Gathering Place, it's a year-long commitment. And in terms of the Milton House, we have been creative in finding other ways to help them out. So that's kind of the, I don't want to say 30,000-foot view of the budget. That's probably the 10,000-foot view of the budget. But at the end of the day, it gets you to where the bottom line is and where we're at today. So going through that, you will see that the budget is balanced. It qualifies for expenditure restraint. There is no reduction in service, and there is no new levy-supported borrowing. But at this time, it still does not qualify for levy limits. The unknowns at this time, as we talked about, the fire department allocation will not be finalized until we hear back from the contract townships, and then ultimately, what the Fire Commission's decision is on how to proceed with any changes to that equation. The assessment ratio is unknown, and that ultimately affects the tax rate. We have no control over that. That is a product of the marketplace. As home values and values of properties continue to increase, every year that they increase, and we don't do a revaluation, that assessment ratio ultimately decreases because the assessment of properties is not accurately reflective of the fair market value of properties. We're predicting that that assessment ratio be about 89%. Last year, I believe it was at 93%. So property values continue to increase, which means that that kind of gap gets widened. 89% is no place to panic, but it does, it is trending in the wrong direction and does mean that it's probably time for a revaluation in 2021. When you, the closer you get to that 80% number, the more out of whack things become, and the more the Department of Revenue starts to take notice. And at some point, they could step in and force us to do a revaluation. We'd have to dip below that 80% number, but, and we're not in jeopardy of that by any means. But you want to always stay as close to 100% as you possibly can. That way, values are reflecting, assessed values are reflecting what the real values of properties are, and everybody pays their fair share. And the certified CPI for final calculation of ERP should be available at the end of this month. CPI is also an important number when calculating the fire department allocation in terms of, there's an exemption for levy limits, which is CPI plus 2%. Don't want to get too much into the weeds of that, but that number will impact our ability to exceed levy limits when funding the fire department.
Except this year.
Because of our, yeah, because we already know we're exceeding that. Yes, that's right.
So we can't utilize it.
Yeah. We already know that we're going to exceed our levy limit capacity in funding the fire department due to the increase, even the projected increase of $25,000 exceeds that. So we won't be able to take advantage of that this year. That's right.
Cause the fire budget's going up 180,000.
So, um, there are some options that we, in talking with the mayor, thought it would be good to put together some options for the council to consider. Certainly don't need to make any decisions tonight, uh, but any direction or discussion you may have, uh, will assist, uh, Dan and I and the mayor in kind of coming up with that 12,000. If you, if you, if you do feel so compelled to take action, you certainly can. Uh, but some areas that we can, uh, you know, we could look, we could look to, uh, decrease would be our capital allocation. Right now in the budget, there's 254,000 and some change for capital allocation. That covers everything from streets to equipment purchases to building maintenance, the library roof, parks, things of that nature. Uh, that number has been flat for the last couple of years, uh, but that could be one area to look to reduce in order to, to meet this levy limit shortfall. Employee relations, um, we, instead of giving a 1% to non-represented employees, we could reduce that number uh, or eliminate that number, or we could look to increase employees' health insurance contributions. Uh, that could meet that shortfall. We have to provide, uh, police officers who are represented by the union, a 1% per contract. Uh, but the folks at DPW, city hall and library, uh, are, are not tied to that 1% increase so that we could eliminate that or lower it. We could look to nonprofit allocations every year. That is, seems to be the part of the budget that's discussed the most, although it's less than 1% of the budget. Uh, there always seems to be a lot of discussion around that. Um, if we were looking to, uh, I, you know, we could eliminate those, we could reduce those proportionately. Um, that would be another area to look. Uh, contingency is another area that we have used, utilized in the past. This year it's fun, it's budgeted at 50,000, which is where it's been for the last two years. Uh, we could reduce that as well. Or we could go through the entire budget again, uh, which we're not opposed to, uh, and look at various administrative operational expenses, training budgets and office supplies, um, subscriptions, conferences, things of that nature. We could do that again. Uh, and, and ultimately if that was the direction the council gave us, you know, Dan and I and the department heads could figure out that $12,000. Or other, there's not really much left. I don't know why I put other on there, but if there's some other ideas that we haven't thought of, we certainly would be willing to investigate that. I did put a footnote at the bottom that, uh, it's important to note that any reduction to any of the above items is likely a reduction into perpetuity. Uh, because this is an operational, uh, reduction and because we know next year we're likely going to lose, you know, a hundred thousand dollars worth of state aid. Uh, any reduction this year would likely be a reduction next year and the next year and the next year and the next year, uh, because it's going to take a long time to get that state aid number back up if ever. Uh, unless laws change at the state level. So I just want to make sure that folks understand because this is an operational reduction that we would need to make, it likely would result in a, in a reduction in whatever one of those categories you choose or other categories. It's likely a reduction into perpetuity. Um, we know that we are in a tough spot next year. Uh, that, that is no, that's no secret and that's no mystery. Um, we don't know what that number is, but it's likely to be considerably higher than $12,000 when we're having this discussion in October of 2021. Um, so I, I just don't want anybody to go into mind of, well, let's just reduce this number by 12,000 and then we'll bump it up again next year. And that's highly unlikely. Um, so I just wanted to make that note.
But Al, we really had no choice though about the reduction. That's come from somewhere.
Yes, yes, we cannot exceed levy limits. Nope. And it would be unwise to go to referendum for $12,000. So.
I think on this screen, if there were a pie chart of what those various pieces represented, um, the employee relations piece is a big piece of the pie. Uh, capital allocation is probably next and the rest are tiny little slivers, right?
Yeah, yeah. If you're, if you're saying what, uh, yeah, I, I like the way you said that. If, if we created a pie chart, um, that shows kind of what makes up the budget, yes, employee relations would be the biggest slice of that pie. Obviously wages and benefits are what drives the budget. I think it's probably 60% when you say, Dan.
Um, yeah, something like that. Last year it was 50%. I'll try to pull it up and then, um, so I don't forget, Inga brought up a, uh, one big typo that we had on the nonprofit slide. I don't know how Al and I both missed it, but.
They need to, Inga looked at this too.
Oh.
I, I made a note of it to you in an email that it needed to be corrected.
You did? Oh, go ahead. What, what was it?
The Milton House requested 20,000, not 10.
Oh. Okay. Well, there you go.
Somehow none of us looked too closely at their submission form.
This year they requested 20?
Correct.
Correct.
So they are, they are in the budget for 10, but.
So just, I, I just want to make sure you guys were aware before they made presentations on November 4th, what their actual request was.
Didn't they actually ask for more than 10 last year?
I believe so. I think they asked for possibly 20 last year as well.
15,000 last year as well.
Yeah. I think it was 15.
It was 15.
Okay. I know it was more than the 10.
And the gathering place asked for 15 last year. I know that.
Actually, go back to the nonprofits like, cause I'm wondering, I thought, um, in 2017, we gave 10,000 to Milton House and 5,798 to the gathering place.
Yes, we did.
I can't stop that too.
You're right.
Um, the not, not that it matters, but the, no, 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 I'm sorry with this, what I'm about to say. Um, the Milton House did request 20 in, for the 2020 budget.
Oh, that's 15,000. Okay, 20, okay.
Yep, I, I just found their request. Not that it matters necessarily to this discussion, but.
Well, of course, because I'm assigned to them, it's my job to advocate for, uh, one of the groups, which is the gathering place and you, you know, it, yes, we could just cut them off our list, but you know, when we work, when we look at nonprofits uh, as part of, under the COVID-19, we also have to consider that they have not been able to raise funds over the past year. Uh, they have been trying to get by with next to nothing. And they have, uh, for example, with the gathering place, they have been dealt a difficult hand because they provide daily the, uh, meals on wheels and they are committed to that for the service of our community. So they need to provide the building, the utilities as well as staff to be there daily and pay for that uh, in order to provide that community service. And so we have to have the money to do that. Um, you know, that's an example of the funds that need to be provided for that for our community. And yet we haven't been able to raise money throughout the year to facilitate that. And I'm sure that the Milton House can, can come up with examples of that too for our community without being able to have fundraisers throughout their year. It's just been a, a, a difficult year and I want to make sure that we just don't ignore them as, by having them be a nonprofit uh, group under our responsibility.
With you, Teresa, and both of, you know, it's, it's been a rough year for both entities. I mean, you know, I, and Milton House, I know that they lost a lot of their school tours and all, which all their fundraising events for the year. So.
The civil war would have been the, the biggest, uh, issue and we lost all of it.
Well, they lost this, that one, but also, you know, chicken barbecue and the arts and crafts thing, which is actually the biggest event. So that one, I mean, that was gone too. So, yeah.
I think it's important for us to keep both of those entities in mind this year specifically because of the virus and all of the issues that they have both had, just, you know, trying to keep the doors open when their fundraising just isn't there.
Oh, I think it means that as we progress through this cycle of budget, we just need to pay a nice close attention to all aspects again, like we have in past years. And I'm sure we'll have good discussions, try to figure out where to figure, uh, to find this or to take out this 12,000, but it just means we need to look at everything very closely and, or, you know, as a group.
Yeah, I agree.
I have a question for Al. On your list here, you've got employee relations, wage reduction, health insurance, and you've given us a couple of options there. Have you run that past the employees at all? I mean.
No. No.
I, I would not be in favor of touching that. I, I think the 1% increases is, uh, the least we can do. So I'd rather take it from a shared grouping of capital allocation and contingency personally.
And I kind of also agree. I don't think we should really try to touch the employee relations one much for the cutting this stuff out. I know in the past we have looked at capital a lot and as well as contingency. So, but employees also have had a, a rough stick of it this year too. So.
Yeah, that's true. I'm sorry. I wasn't thinking. I, I just was thinking that maybe somebody might actually like to have us contribute more to the health insurance as opposed to that. I don't know. Um, I was also wondering, I, I know that Mark was working on a capital list. Do we have anything that we can look at?
We don't have, yeah, we don't have that, uh, we don't have the list tonight for a couple of reasons. One, we, we want to, we want to set the number. So right now the number in the budget is 254,000. We set that number and then, and then we, we take the master list of capital requests and we fill it in. If, if the council's direction is to reduce that 254,000 by 12,000, well, then we're looking to fill capital requests at, uh, you know, 242,000. Uh, so that's, that's one of the reasons. The other reason is we're still looking to refine some numbers on, on the list of capital requests, as you would expect. And as we've seen in years past, the capital list far exceeds 254,000. It's probably double that or not more. Um, so knowing the number we're shooting for, we can start to fill in with priority. Uh, equipment purchases, building upgrades, park additions, things like that, or park maintenance, park upkeep. Um, so it's kind of, it's almost a reverse practice.
This is probably too early to ask this, but do you anticipate an ability to purchase any of that in 2020 with any money left open?
Oh, you mean purchase it with 2,000, i- i- if there, if there is a, if there's a, a return to the general fund after the 2020 year is done?
Yes.
It's possible. Yes. I, we won't know for certain, but you know, there's, there was a number of things that didn't happen in 2020 that we budgeted for. Obviously we didn't go, you know, nobody really went to conferences, not turning on the splash pad, for example, uh, saved the general fund $25,000. Um, you know, but there was other things that did increase too. Some of that will be covered through the routes to recovery grant application, but it, it'll be, it's a weird year before we can see how that all shakes out. Uh, but it's, it's very, it's poss, it's very possible. And that's what we've done in the past. We have a list of things that we want to buy with the next year's capital, uh, with the next year's budget. That budget passes, we purchase those things. And if there's money left over, it's like a Pez dispenser. The next one pops up and we say, okay, we, we can, we can buy a snowplow. We can, you know, pave a few more streets. We can buy the barricade trailer, um, you know, things like that.
Okay. But yeah, we can't rely on it.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a sustainable funding source, but that's why we've always tried to use that kind of after the fact, uh, for, for those kind of, hey, this didn't make the cut kind of stuff.
Al, could I just say a comment? Uh, I want to salute you and all the department heads and the employees. Um, when you look at some other communities, uh, not only in Wisconsin, but throughout the country. I mean, it's a problem for 12,534, but it's not insurmountable like some communities who are in debt by millions of dollars. I appreciate your effort.
No, thank, well, thank you. It's, it's, it's not a process that happened in one, one budget cycle. It's multiple budget cycles and it's commitment from staff, you know, up to the top with, with the department heads, all the way down to, you know, the folks that are out there looking to cut costs, uh, you know, in the streets and in the squad cars and out there. It's, it's certainly not a, uh, it's not an accident, uh, but it does take time and it's a, it's a culmination of efforts and decisions. So again, not, we don't necessarily need to make a decision tonight on the 12,534. Really because one of the big things still hanging out there is the fire department allocation. Again, if, let's just say, for example, uh, Kashkhan decides, you know what, we're, we're out, we're going to go with Fort Atkinson or we're going to go with Whitewater, we're going to go with Edgerton, that 12,534 number goes up. Um, so we don't need to kind of make the decision tonight, but I do believe what I heard was if, if we're looking to make cuts, we shouldn't look to nonprofits and we shouldn't look to employee relations, at least at this time.
I, I would concur with that in terms of, uh, uh, you know, a general, a, a general guideline. Uh, we may have to revisit that if, uh, you know, Town of Harmony decided they weren't going to ante up for the fire department. We've got some steep problems, but for the time being, uh, I'm, I'm good with that.
I agree.
Okay. And we'll obviously get, you know, this, this group will get several more looks at this and, you know, even though it's a weird world, um, I'd be more than happy to set up a Zoom, a one-on-one Zoom call with anybody on this screen or, or Dan and I could meet with you via Zoom or, uh, to go over it and look, look at the, you know, the detailed details behind this. Every one of those categories, uh, you know, kind of breaks down into hundreds and hundreds of, of lines within the budget. So, and we've done it before. We've, uh, and, and we're more than willing to do it again this year, just because we're in a this kind of weird environment doesn't necessarily mean that we're, we can't do it. And in some ways it's actually easier because we can share screens like this and you can look exactly at what we're looking at. So, so I think, uh, you know, we can, you'll, you'll get many more looks at this on November 4th, November 17th, um, so.
Al, will we have the, do you, you think that we will have by the 17th, all of the information we need from the fire commission and the towns?
I, I hope so. I mean, the letter that was sent to them with their, you know, with the invoices said, please return by November 16th. So I certainly hope so. Um, but that, that ball is in their court. We are aware that, um, was it Harmony, Dan, that met last week?
Correct. Last week, Monday, eight days ago.
And then we know that Lima, Lima meets, Lima meets on the 11th of November and.
Kashkhan's on November 11th, Lima's next week, Wednesday or Thursday, I think. And Johnstown was last night.
So, I mean, and, and the fire commission meets tomorrow night. Um, so if anybody has any information as, as to, if any decisions were made by those, by those entities that will have met by that, by tomorrow night, it'd be nice to hear that. It sounds like John Jennings has had conversations with some of the townships. Uh, but none of the townships have talked to us other than Kashkhan. And that was only really vicariously through John.
And then I, I did talk to their clerk.
Okay.
But.
So to answer your question, I, I certainly hope we know by November 17th. And, uh, I did to, we have reached out to the nonprofits. They will be presenting on November 4th as they have done in, in, in the years past. So they can outline their request and talk maybe, you know, specifically about how the pandemic has affected them. And, uh, you know, why this money is important to them in, in the upcoming year and, um, you know, perhaps why their allocation or why their requests are, you know, um, have increased. And I don't think it's probably a mystery to anybody why they're increasing. It's all the reasons that Teresa outlined and more. Um, and then on November 17th, we'll have the public hearing. As long as the council adopts the next item on the agenda. So I think there was, uh, really only two slides left. These are kind of repetitive because. those people who know me know I like to kind of, you know, hammer things homes. The city of Milton will collect less taxes in 2021 than in 2020. We absolutely know that's true. That will not change. We maintain current service levels. Compensation for all employees stays the same, at least at this time. There's no change in percentage paid on insurance premiums, meaning the contribution level that employees pay for their insurance is maintained. At this time, capital and infrastructure funding levels are maintained. The general fund expenditure is only increased by 1.56%. This qualifies for expenditure restraint, but does not qualify for levy limits. And there is no new tax levy supported borrowing component within this budget. We're down to 23.2 cents, which is still rather high, but wasn't that long ago. We were at like 29. So that number starts to drop precipitously in 2026.
Yes, and five or four, 24, 25, yeah, something like that. But it's going to be at that 25 cent-ish level for the next couple more years.
And this is kind of the budget schedule that was kind of preferred by the council at their last meeting. So the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the budget publication. That would be published then in the Courier on October 29. We'll have another council meeting on November 4, in which the nonprofits will present and we can look at any changes to the budget that may occur between now and then. Public hearing will be scheduled for the 17th, and then we hope to approve the budget on 12/1/20. And that concludes my presentation. I can always bring that back up if folks have questions about specific slides, but it's just easier to look at everybody.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Are we ready to move on? Or do we have other questions? It was nicely done, and I just want to thank all the department heads and all the staff. And we'll continue to work on this and figure out a way to meet our levy limits. It's pretty early, and we have a few few more weeks before all the numbers come in. So we'll just keep working hard on that. But you can have a good idea, a good idea of where we're at. And we're not so bad, not so bad as we thought we might have been many months ago.
Four months ago, you know, we were we were fearing the worst. The good news is those worst fears were not realized. The bad news is they'll be realized next year. It's really, it wasn't a matter of that all of a sudden the problems were solved. It's just that the legislature decided that they weren't going to amend the biennial budget and that they'll address all budget shortfalls next year, which will then trickle down to the municipalities next year. So I understand why they made the decision. They're in a tough spot, too. So we'll just have to deal with how that impacts us at the local level next year.
OK, discussion and possible action regarding the notice of the public hearing on the 2021 City of Milton annual budget.
So as we kind of just talked about, state statutes require that we publish a preliminary budget every year. It's we always kind of reiterate the fact that although it's published, it is not final and it will change. It has to change in order to meet levy limits. But we are required to publish a budget. The budget that is published is shown in the attachment, the PDF attachment, and it's reflective of the numbers that we just shared with you a few moments ago.
Well, we.
Ultimately, it establishes the public hearing to occur on November 17.
Linda?
Will we also publish the unknowns of the fire department so that people are aware in some way?
Well, what's published is what's on the attachment to the agenda tonight. So that's what will show up in the Courier is is our draft budget. The narrative that you just saw will not be published, but, you know, it's it's out there on our website. It's a part of it'll be on YouTube, you know, tomorrow. So and then, you know, it's kind of, I guess, our job to talk about that.
So we need a motion?
What what exactly do you want the motion to be for this one?
Just to publish it or?
To approve the public hearing for November 17 for the 2021 budget at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Hey, Linda, motion. Chase a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? OK. Discussion and possible action regarding a purchase of land along Putman Parkway.
So as we kind of talked about a few weeks ago, the city of Milton has negotiated and offered a purchase 55 plus or minus acres of land from the Ballardy Family Trust located along Putman Parkway. This is east of County Trunk Highway M, just south of the SSI building and the Diamond Assets Building. The purpose of this acquisition will be to potentially allow for a future rail spur, not only to serve these sites and sites to the south, but also site a potential development site to the north of Putman Parkway. We've had ongoing negotiations with a developer that is looking to acquire a large tract of land north of Putman Parkway and utilize this rail site. In the acquisition of this land allows for that rail site to be extended and also allows for us to market these sites as rail serve sites, which basically don't exist in Rock County anymore, other than the General Motors site in Janesville. The offer to purchase that has been negotiated, which was sent to you today, is heavily contingent and has many contingencies that are predicated upon the successful development project to the north. It's not as though we we may not want this land at some point in the future if that if that project were to fail. But if that project was to not come to fruition, it's the rail spur would not be extended at this time, and we would retain the land that we currently have for development sites. So even if the council approves this offer to purchase this evening, there are still several contingencies, as outlined in the offer to purchase, that would need to be satisfied before we could execute that sale. But nonetheless, the first step in the process is to have the council approve the offer to purchase, so we can start to kind of check off those contingencies with the other developer and then hopefully close on the sale yet in 2020. If we are lucky enough to close in 2020, that means that the other project is successful and is moving forward and will council will have seen many items on their agenda between now and then before we close on it. So. I think the only other thing important to note is that the funding for this acquisition would be through Tiff districts. So it would not be it is not our intention to have it be levy supported debt. It would be funded through the Tiff district future tax revenue.
OK, I'll just go around to see who has any questions or concerns. Bless you. Bill?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions. I think it's great.
Ryan?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Hey, is there a motion? Teresa?
I'll second.
OK, she hasn't motioned yet.
I'm moved to authorize the city administrator to execute the offer to purchase the Ballardy Family Trust.
I'll second that.
OK, is that good for Mark? Yes, that's OK.
The it's been executed, so it would just be merely to motion to approve the offer to purchase as submitted.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and action. To authorize the appointment of additional election officials for the January 2020, December 2021 election cycle.
So this is an item brought forth by our city clerk, Van Trader. These individuals will be helping, looking to help us out on the November 3 election. There are a lot of new names on here as a lot of kind of our, as she indicates, our veteran officials have not been able to help us out. We still have a number who are going to help us out in in November. But, you know, we this actually goes all the way through next year as well. So these are a list of new folks that are looking to help us out at a minimum from in November, but also extend into the April election of 2021.
Any questions? Is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make a motion to approve additional election officials.
The appointment of additional election officials?
For the 2021 election cycle, yes.
January 20 through December 2021?
Yes.
Is there a second? I don't know if it's Devin. Did you second?
I think it was Devin, yeah.
OK, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? OK, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action. Accepting the donation of trail improvements of Mud Lake Park from the Gathering Place Fishing Club.
So Inga, you can take this one since you've been kind of spearheading this.
I think Howie's been more so spearheading it. I just helped him write a memo. But the Parks Recreation Commission met with a representative from the Gathering Place Fishing Club. They use the Mud Lake Park for 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 fishing club outings and other area lakes as well. When they went there, Tom Presny, right, Howie? I remember. OK. He's he's leading this project. They noted that the access to the Mud Lake is not very great. It's a very steep incline for even the most able bodied person. So when you're trying to take a kayak out or bring down ice fishing equipment, it's it's a challenge. So they're looking at trying to soften the hill a little bit, trying to make it a little bit more accessible for people who want to to use Mud Lake for fishing purposes and kayaking. Does that kind of sum it up, Howie? You're on mute right now.
And they're going to cover all the expenses for it.
That's the most important part. I should have led with that.
Linda?
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Mud Park Trail Improvement donation from the Gathering Place.
The Gathering Place Fishing Club.
Fishing Club.
Yep.
The fishermen.
Yes.
And women.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That motion carries.
Great. What a great donation. That's nice of them.
Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 202025, adopting the 2020-2024 comprehensive outdoor recreational.
So the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, the Parks Recreation Commission has been working on it for the last few months, and we're at a point where we're bringing it to council for approval. The Parks Recreation Commission did a final review at their meeting on Monday, and I sent out an updated copy with some red line changes to the council and the plan commission, because the plan commission reviewed it at their meeting earlier today, and they recommended approval, with the exception that they'd like the Liberty Park parking lot project to be reviewed for needs, costs, and those types of things once it gets closer to the project date. Are there any questions on the the plan? Or do you want me to bring it up at all with any thing the council wanted to look at more closely together as a group?
So this plan has been a culmination of work from not only the Parks and Recreation Committee, but considerable amount of work on Inga's behalf. And I know that this has been, you know, a goal of hers for a long time to kind of finalize this. There is a lot of information and a lot of documentation in here, and it's a tremendous amount of effort to put it together. And certainly appreciate the comments that came from the plan commission. They were very well in support of the plan. But, you know, had questions about page 96, for anybody who wants to kind of reference it. And, you know, the questions were surrounding, you know, is that is that need really a need to have 50 stalls? And, you know, could that $190,000 be better spent somewhere else? And as we talked through it, you know, there was kind of a, you know, an explanation of, well, the plan is meant to be kind of a clearinghouse or a warehouse of all projects that could be undertaken and that ultimately, if if that project were ever to be undertaken, there's several pieces, several variables that would need to fall into place, one being a funding source, and then two would require plan commission and council approval, again, a second time around for that. So once we had that kind of conversation, I think they felt a little bit more comfortable. But ultimately, you know, as even Commissioner Ostrowski pointed out, there are many items and many plans that we adopt over time that are that may seem pie in the sky, but it's good to put it out there because we wanted we want to have a clear picture of where we want to go and what we aspire to be. You know, if you look at the Cross Ridge Plan, Cross Ridge Park Plan, you know, that plan's been around for a number of years, and we have slowly kind of ticked off some of those things. And I say that in a good way. But some of those things, you know, boy, we sure would love to have them, but we might never get there. But it's good to have it down and it's good to have kind of, you know, a place to look into the future. Will we have ball diamonds, baseball diamonds there someday? You know, that would be great. But, you know, competing priorities, limited funding sources, changes in in landscape, you know, can can have an impact on that. So when we kind of had that global discussion, I think there was a better comfort level for it. But ultimately, I think it's a fantastic plan and a ton of work from Inga and the Parks and Recreation Commission. And, you know, it's a great thing to have. And, you know, as I reminded the plan commission, you know, their role in the process, as outlined in state statutes, frankly, is that when decisions are made in the future, their role is to see if those if those decisions, whether they're land acquisitions or site plans that involve public facilities, their role is outlined in state statutes is to see if that acquisition or site plan is in accordance with established city plans. That's how it's spelled out in state statutes. This now is our established city plan, or this will be our established city plan for our comprehensive outdoor recreational programs. So, you know, this plan will be referred to again, and it won't be just something that kind of sits on the shelf. Frankly, we're obligated to look at it again based on the plan commission's role in the process. So once this becomes kind of the official plan for outdoor recreation, it is a living document and one that will be referenced on several occasions and should be referenced. So I'm very impressed and pleased with the work that Inga and the commission has done.
I think that we can all feel good that the staff have really worked hard on positioning the council to have some structure in their future decision making on policies because we worked hard on the strategic plan, now the comprehensive Parks and Recreation Plan, and that will help guide future councils. When we're all not here, there will be living documents that guide decision making. And quite frankly, that's something that we have accounts as a council have not had. So I'm really pleased with the steps that city staff have made, especially Inga. She's really been the driving factor in getting these plans done, and we couldn't have done it without her and our expertise. So I just want to express my appreciation, too, and how pleased I am with where how we're positioning the city of Milton, because we're all not going to be on the council forever. I know I'm not. I'm not going to be mayor forever.
Linda will.
So I feel like when I'm ready to leave, which, you know, not going to be that much longer, probably someday, you know, I feel like we've done a lot of good foundational work. And it's because of all of you, like everybody on this Zoom meeting and all the staff that aren't on the Zoom meeting and volunteers on our committees and everybody that shows up. So I'm really proud of all the work that everybody's doing. And we did this during a pandemic. So there's no excuses going forward to not get work done, right?
And I I just want to thank Howie and Mark, too, for helping me out and helping me gather information for the plan, pricing and historical knowledge on some of the parks. Pricing and historical knowledge on some of the parks. It's nice to have some of those elements captured in one location for people to review.
Is it Mark A or Mark E?
I'm gonna go with Mark Mark Langer.
It's Marky Mark to you. All right, so. Um, are we in a good position to get a motion? Linda?
I will make the motion to approve Resolution number 2025, adopting the City of Milton 2024 Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Well, I just want to, you know, make a point to say I appreciate not having to break any ties this week. Linda, am I supposed to thank you for that?
There's still at least two more votes up ahead.
I've jinxed myself now.
I just want to make the comment that this year was the 20th year of our prairie seed collection. And a huge thank you goes out to all of our park and rec commissioners throughout the years for the we've come with us. And the new generations we have coming out to our prairie seed collections. I was just going through some papers of all the names of the the at the time kids that came out and helped us do the collection and the seeding. And, well, they're all adults now. So we have a new, we've got a whole new generation coming out and a big thanks for to the Parks and Rec Commission. And I just think that this plan was just awesome. Thank you so much, all of you.
We've raised them well. Okay, so review of August and September financial statements. Dan?
Nothing overly exciting as we kind of talked about in the budget presentation. 2020 has got some lonkeyness to it. There's expenses that didn't come to fruition for various reasons, just like there's revenues that didn't come to fruition for various reasons. But there's nothing that I'm seeing at this point for any kind of cause for alarm. So I guess if there's any questions on anything.
Any questions from anyone?
Interested. What's cemetery fuel? Do you eat the graves or what?
What's what?
I'm just joking.
Oh, good cemetery fuel? That's just the gas for the moors.
Yeah.
Not for the graves.
For the secret crematorium that we have.
It's down there every month.
Yeah.
Never been asked that one.
That's why it's way on the edge of town, so we don't really know what's going on down there.
Oh, get close to Halloween.
Just a question related to our earlier discussion on the the contingency line.
Yeah, let me get it pulled up.
Yeah.
Share your screen, Dan. Share your screen.
I I can see I I'm on it now, Bill.
Okay. Yes, the question is, are are there designs between now and the end of the year on contingency needs?
Not that not that I can think of at this point.
No, I wouldn't think so.
And and traditionally, we we hardly touch that, knock on wood, everyone, please.
I I just bring that up in light of our earlier budget discussion in terms of there may be some ability to advance some capital purchases through use of contingency funds to help our situation for 2021.
And I also have an unexpected issue coming up this year in that our current body cam body camera system was purchased by one of the big companies, and it's going to force me to do a change. So I don't know that that's going to fall under contingency. But that particular expense is not currently budgeted for, nor is it part of the 2021 budget yet either, because I'm still researching. So it's those kinds of things that might have to use up some of those dollars too. Because I don't think there's any desire either in the police department or in this body that we give up body cameras. I think they're here to stay and we have to keep them.
I I just bring up the issue in light of our earlier conversation in terms of, you know, where where we may be looking.
That's a great point, Bill. Yeah.
Linda?
I I was just kind of wondering, how is the how are the building pledges coming for the library? Is are we are those coming in on a regular basis still or?
We will be receiving our last pledge in February. Because it'll be five years since we started the pledging. So the last one is supposed to be coming in in February.
Right.
And if and if you remember when we presented the 2019 audited financial statements, the partner at Hawkins had referenced the IOU that's sitting in as a receivable in the general fund and is sitting as a liability in the library. And looking at potentially forgiving that balance on whatever hasn't been. Not that any of the pledges are going to fall through, but we know that there's a there's a difference between what is still owed to the city, so to speak, and what the outstanding pledges are. And memory serves me right, it's right around $100,000 plus or minus. So that might be something we bring up in the January, February timeframe as we're kind of closing out the the books of 2020. That wouldn't affect anything with fund balance or anything, because that is all shown as non spendable fund balance currently in the financial statements. It would just disappear if it was forgiven, so to speak, because it doesn't make sense to hold a receivable if 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 collection of it is in doubt. And that's not saying anything about the pledges, because the the pledges have all come through. But there was just a difference in what was pledged and what was needed for that project. I want to make sure people are very clear on that. And that's not people that didn't follow through on their pledges or or there was something we'd recognized throughout the building project. But we weren't sure how it was going to shake out at the end of the day. And when you look at the project in in its entirety, to have $100,000 shortfall for what we got is incredible.
2018 Library of the Year too.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go on to discussion and possible action on the 2020 slash 2024 Strategic Plan. Okay, library staff, no, I'm here, right? Like, I'm not going to scare anybody. Just came up the elevator.
So, um, we've been going through the the strategic plan over the last few months. And now we're at a point where we're ready to approve it, I think. I did send out just an updated red line version earlier today. There, when I looked at it over the weekend, there are just a couple of things that I thought could be made a little bit more clear. I also noticed for the first time that all of our goals started with two except one of them, which was interesting. So I did remove the the word two to start each of the goals. I thought it was a little bit more powerful to start with an action verb of some sort, I guess. Just wondering if there was any additional comments on the plan, if everyone had a chance to look at those red lined? If you want me to go through the document and look at those together as a group or anything like that.
I'm I'll just go through everybody. Bill, any questions or comments on the strategic plan?
I I think Inga should read the whole thing to us.
Get ready for it.
All right, Bill's going to be chairing the rest of the meeting.
Great, great job. And, you know, I'm ready to approve.
Okay.
Brian?
I'd also say great job, and I'm also ready to approve. Although, you know, doing a full reading of it could be entertaining, I guess.
That'll be the next.
But I think that, you know, Bill should read it rather than Inga.
Teresa?
No questions.
Larry?
Well, I am excited about it. I think it's going to be really, again, like you said earlier, mayor, a guide for the future councils and future administration. It's good.
Devon?
It looks great.
Linda?
I think it looks great, too.
Awesome, awesome. That's everybody, right? So we're just waiting for a motion to approve.
Get Teresa?
I did. Didn't I get Teresa?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right.
Missed you.
Linda?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2020-2024 Strategic Plan for the City of Milton.
Also get that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Happy dance. We have a strategic plan.
The only comment, you know, that I would make, it kind of echoes the comments that I made about the corp. You know, we started planning for this strategic plan pre pandemic. And then we kind of put it on hold. And as we got into the pandemic, we realized, you know, I kind of wish, you know, Inga said, boy, I kind of wish we had that strategic plan in place so we could start to make some of the decisions that we're making in line with the plan. And, you know, we decided to forge with forward with it during a pandemic. And, you know, that I didn't know that we could do it. And Inga has done a remarkable job of kind of keeping on task and doing a lot of work behind the scenes. And not only is it a well thought out and constructed document, it looks great. It's readable. It's it's folks can digest it. And again, we plan to refer back to it, you know, regularly. And really should refer to it during this budget process as we talk about, you know, cutting 12,000 or more dollars. You know, that should be in our mind of, okay, what did we, what did we say in our plan was important to us? And, you know, how does that stack up against where we look to cut the budget, not only this year, but next year? So it's an important document to have in place. And I owe a lot of credit to Inga and and all of you for sitting through many meetings of wordsmithing and discussing it, not an easy task, but it's it's good to have.
It was not easy. I vouch for that.
I I just want to say thanks to everybody as well for your continued engagement in the process and hanging with us during those long meetings, what seemed to go every single time we met. Yeah, I just want to say thank you again. And next steps, what I'm looking to do is put together some, like a brochure that would be able to give to people to let them know what our goals are for the next five years. And then maybe we can put together some kind of poster or something to put in each department as well, just to keep these items fresh in everybody's mind as well. And then I'd also like to look at reformatting our council memos to make sure that we're referring back to the plan with each of the items that we bring to council.
Yep, for sure.
Yeah.
And I also would just like to add, Inga did an awesome job. Well, actually, everybody did an awesome job in in getting the community involved in this. We had a lot of different groups look at this and that, you know, it's always been always been my goal as a council member was to have citizen involvement. And this was truly citizen involvement and to all those people too.
Between all of our employees, council, community members, nonprofit groups that were involved, I think I had 75 people on the email that I sent out for the initial draft that was close to completion. So I think we had a lot of eyes on it and a lot of potential input from those individuals.
And I can't wait for them all to receive the final copy to be part. Because a lot of people probably had not been part of a big strategic planning process like that. And I'm, it's really satisfying that we gave people that opportunity. So, all right, we're going to move on to general items, committee reports. Brian?
Historic preservation, Matt. Two weeks ago, it was. And we're also actually meeting next week or this week, rather, as well. And one of our topics that came up was possibly looking into maybe a restoration of the Goodrich plot at Milton Cemetery. Because one of our members was at the cemetery and noticing that it seems to have fallen into a little bit of a state of disrepair and some of the area surrounding it. So we're actually going to be meeting there on Wednesday to look at it ourselves and maybe look at that as being a maybe a project that needs to be taken care of.
Um, another item on the agenda is talking with the Milton House about some potential upgrades for technology that they're looking to do and having the Historic Preservation Commission support those.
Thanks for adding that, too.
Excellent. Any other committee reports?
Um, I'll just do a report for Parks and Recreation Commission. We met last night, but I just wanted to comment on the prairie seed collection events that they held in October. Going back to what Linda was commenting on with the events, there was one on October 10th at Tower Hill Park and then one just this past Saturday at Cross Ridge Park. The Tower Hill Park event was very well attended. Almost everyone there were wearing masks. Everyone was physically distancing well. There was probably 30 people that ended up attending, mainly because that Saturday was a gorgeous fall day. This past Saturday, there was maybe around 10, which is still impressive considering the weather. If you remember, it was rainy and cold. So just wanted to give an update on those two events.
Any other committee reports?
Fire Commission is this week.
Yep.
Tomorrow.
New time, 6 o'clock.
Is it? It's at 6 tomorrow?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
22 and a half hours from now.
I totally would have showed up at 7:00. I still may, but no.
Just an update from Plan Commission. Obviously, they talked about the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. But they also approved a site plan for Catch the Wave, which is an indoor recreational swimming facility. That approval is contingent upon a public hearing being held on November 4th. Due to the publishing omission by the courier, we weren't able to hold the public hearing tonight as planned. But that will be held on November 4th. We did have a resident speak at it, not in opposition. But so I don't know if folks will come on the 4th as well. But that was approved, and that's kind of an exciting project, and the building looks fantastic. So hopefully that can come to fruition as well. It will likely have a TIF development agreement for that project soon as well, because they're building on public land. So but that was an update. And the Plan Commission also denied the changes to the Red Hawk Apartments site plan that were brought forth. That site plan was originally approved in October of 2019. That project didn't move forward. They brought back a revised site plan for the Plan Commission to review this evening. And the Plan Commission denied that site plan due to the removal of several key pieces of that project that were once intended to be constructed. So we'll inform their architect of that tonight or tomorrow and see if they bring back a revised revised site plan in order to meet some of those requests from the Plan Commission.
Thank you. Anything else for anyone? Howie, do you have a staff report?
Let's see. Yep, not on mute. Okay. Anyways, the flushing of hydrants hopefully done this week. They're still working on the concrete on Madison Avenue. We have not received a lot of complaints so far. That's good. Probably last couple more weeks, won't it, Mark? And let's see, Dairy Queen has started. So we put the footings in, so they're started their construction. So put the footings in, so they're, started their construction. And other than that, just getting ready for winter, snowed last, yesterday, so. And then besides that, we're finishing up the interviews for Donnie's position.
Excellent, excellent. Linda?
How are we with our salt and sand, Howie?
Both the, both the sheds are full yet. Actually, last year it started really early, the snow. And after January, we didn't have as much plowing. There's a lot of events because it just, a lot of the small snowfalls. But, but yeah, right now, it's, you know, everything's filled, a little bit filled up from last year yet, so.
Ashley, does your cat have a staff report?
Yes, um, we are just checking out books at the library, making videos, and we're having fun. So we're all doing good.
Excellent, and I'm here, I can vouch for that. It is the funnest place to do city hobby. Dan, anything?
Nope, we're just chugging along with the budget and got 184 people through the doors to name of ballots. So.
Mark E., Mark, Mark?
Yeah, the concrete project Howie mentioned, that'll be, it's on schedule to be completed by the end of October here, so before Halloween, so that'll be good. Hopefully we don't get a bunch of rain that they're calling for, but we'll see what happens. Jansel Street, he, the contractor has the sewer main installed, he's working on some laterals, which are the lines that go to the private properties. And he's gonna, they'll start putting their old, some of the road pavement back together tomorrow. I think we'll get most of Jansel Street put back together. I don't know that we'll have some of the driveways and the paving completed this year, depending on the weather. We'll see what we get here in the next couple of weeks.
Inga, thank you. Anything left?
I don't think I have anything.
Okay.
She just gave her 2020 staff report tonight on the agenda, so.
So then we are right back to team building. Okay, and I was gonna email you today and then I forgot, so. The question is, Dan is already rubbing his face.
Just tired.
Me too, me too. What is, name something that has made, what has made the biggest impression on you recently? Ghost children, I see these ghost children everywhere. Biggest impression on you recent? Howie, I cannot believe Howie's going first.
The timing of Al's kids to always pop up exactly when you say, what's made a good impression? Boom, he's there this afternoon.
Yeah, he did it this afternoon, too.
What could be like, what could happen, like we're just out of the air, boom, he's there. It's just great, he's got perfect timing.
Yeah, he's, he's got perfect timing, all right.
I've been impressed by the, the early voting turnout.
Oh, Mark, he gets to everybody's.
Are you volunteering to help? Is that what I heard?
Can I in the city? I'm not a resident.
Yeah, oh yeah, you can.
Oh, well, sure, sign me up. I watch my kids, though.
Howie, you got another one?
I, I do have a different one. The amount of donations we still get when things are difficult, so.
Nice, very nice.
Um, perseverance and support. Mary and I and my daughter have ventured through very tough times recently. And I appreciate people coming out of the woodwork and being supportive. Even though they have their own problems going on, their own challenges with our pandemic. It gives me hope that America still exists.
We're hanging in there.
I'm gonna say the, the beautiful fall foliage. We've managed to get out for a couple of rides in the countryside, and it's, it's been gorgeous. And sometimes that's very renewing as well.
Um, for me, in local government management circles, we often talk about how there's a very low number of females in top administrator positions. And this past week, I saw that there was an administrator recruitment in Illinois that actually had three females as their top candidates. So I was impressed by that and just nice to see a, a change in, in some of those recruitments, too. Opening some doors.
Were you one of them, Inga?
No, I was not.
I have to say, for me, I, of course, my daughter is also in education and looking at all of the information that we're seeing in the paper and our school districts are working right now. I, I just have to say that I am very impressed at how ready so many school districts were for this pandemic and the way that they have to teach. It's, it's great to see that. There's a lot of places that don't have those things, but, you know, there are a lot of places where the school districts have been prepared to do online learning or e-learning or partial class. And they're being very flexible and cautious about it, and I'm, it just really excites me.
And I have to piggyback on that one. I've been impressed with the children and how they seem to just respond to a different type of learning that, you know, we worry so much that they're, they're missing so much out of it. And I'm not sure that they are, that they, they seem to have fallen right into place with everything as it is. And it doesn't bother them that they have a mask on their face, that they, it's okay, that they just move right along. And they're learning, they're making friends, they're responding to their teachers. And it's okay, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, not to steal that, but that's kind of where I was going to, is that, is, you know, is the kids, I mean, my two boys have been home for the last two weeks, and it may be longer due to, you know, due to the coronavirus. They don't have it. Leslie and I have, have been able to avoid it. But, you know, they're home and their adaptability, their nimbleness is amazing. And, you know, really, the Milton School District has been phenomenal from everything I have seen. You know, Grant is only in 4K, but the energy and the commitment that they are showing to virtual kids and, and, and the kids that are in session is phenomenal. It really, really is. And it seems like every day, you know, when I read the Gazette, there's another school closure in another surrounding community, and none in Milton. That means, means we're doing something right, they're doing something right. And it's, it's impressive. It's, we can learn a lot from kids.
Yeah.
We really can. With that being said, the reason I had to get up in the middle of Inga's presentation, I apologize for that, is it finally happened, it happens in every child's life. Leslie was putting our youngest one down and Grant cut his own hair. So he's got some big bald patches on his head right now. So that finally happened.
Well, he learned from you.
He'll be five, he'll be five in 10 days, so. So what he, you couldn't see it when he poked, when he ghosted his head in here, but he's got like four big spot at the top. And he said, it happened on accident.
That's exactly what happened to me.
My daughter said the same thing six months ago when she cut her bangs, but she actually did a halfway decent job.
Yeah, luckily, he's got pretty short hair now, which he never really has. He's normally had kind of long, shaggy hair, but we cut it with clippers. So it's kind of hard to see, but every kid has done it, and now ours has too.
Same.
Looks like Ryan's done it, too.
Yeah, Ryan really got it.
Was yours on accident, Ryan?
I'm gonna say kids did it.
They really did it while you were asleep.
Actually, more likely work did it, probably. Oh, well, I, you know, I'll go ahead and segue into mine, I guess. I was gonna say, I've been very impressed with how my two kids have handled having a third, having a third kid in the house. There's actually been pretty much almost no jealousy of Victor at all. And actually, if anything, they've gone out of their way to help with Victor almost too much, especially my daughter. She's like always trying to help. It's impressive.
I have a silly one. I am impressed or inspired by Aaron Rodgers lately. So I listen to the Pat McAfee radio show, and he's on there every Tuesday. And he has definitely taken a different approach this year, and he's more about himself and not caring about what other people think about him. So it's really, really fun listening to him and getting his side of things because he's very, does not like talking to the media, so.
Okay, so just because we're on this subject, what was the little dance he did at the beginning? Like, what was it? Can you explain that to me?
Key and Peele, right?
Yeah, it's an old Key and Peele skit from long ago and that you can't do more than three pumps. Or you get in trouble by the refs, so.
That was great.
But then he did two pick-six afterward, so.
Okay, I'm glad that we moved into like a little lighter phase of this because I was super impressed by the, um, the dude whose truck broke down and he hopped on the longboard and did a tic-tac to Fleetwood Mac's Dreams.
Yes.
And he got, he's got a new truck from Ocean Spray, which is like awesome. Cranberries are like all about Wisconsin. And Fleetwood Mac's, that single and the album.
It's like number one now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, oh my God.
Amazing.
And so I thought that was just like, like something that was so cool. And I think we all need just those small little things just to keep us going. I know I needed that, it was just fun.
It is a really good one. I mean, that's good because what an inspiring dude he seems to be, even though he's got kind of an alternative life. He's super famous now for just kind of being himself. That's, I, I agree, that's, that's a good one. Surprised you actually didn't have that one.
It's a, just a, it's a great.
Jeanette, how many times?
Example of just, yeah, being authentic. And, you know, I'm gonna try and tap into, you know, Ashley's creativity, movie making, too, you know. So who do we got left?
Devin and Mark.
Devin? Devin and Mark S.
Mark?
I'm just gonna go with, I mean, strength of our community. As much as this pandemic is really putting a toll on our small businesses, we're, I mean, kind of putting ourselves aside to continue to support them.
Dan, did you go?
Don't want to, yeah. I'm gonna steal Mark's because I loved it today. 184 people, voting absentee was surpassed any kind of projection that any of us had could have thought of. I don't think there's a single person in our office or on the Zoom call that would have thought 184 people would have walked through the door on day one.
I did, I did. You know, how, how freaked out I was about a line forming outside? And what direction was that line?
She's right.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, I think that is like the very first time in all my elected history anybody has said I was right. Or at least publicly.
I've said it at least twice before.
So we're down, are we down to Mark?
And this has said anything.
That's impressive. Not, no.
Well, everybody has had really good observations, and I think a lot of them, to be halfway serious at least, revolve around the response of, of everybody to COVID. And despite the antagonistic, mutually antagonistic picture of United States as, as shown in some of the media, that's not been my experience. And my experiences in dealing, in interacting with people on every side of the political spectrum, they've shown remarkable empathy towards everybody and understanding and in addressing something that I think really everybody understands is something we all need to deal with together. And as part of that, there's been commenting upon the, the children, the young people, and just, I'm in a position now where I can observe young people in the age of teenagers. And they're often derided for being self-centered and, and in an alternate universe sometimes, and, you know, and my observation is that's, that's not true. And if anything, they, they are, I think, an inspiration to me because they've gone through a lot of disappointments in their normal activities that they were anticipating have, going from grade school to high school, going from high school to college, and really having their world turned upside down in terms of expectations on what things would be like. And they have adapted. Now, it hasn't been easy for them, and it isn't necessarily better for them than it was. But they've accepted that, from what I can tell, and they're all working to make the best of it they can. And so if they keep up that attitude as they continue to grow, I think that's a reason for real optimism for me, for our country, so.
The best for last. And that is exciting. And, you know, I'm out of the age of having teenagers. I don't, I don't know who else has teenagers but you, Mark. Right? So that is really a helpful observation, and it gives me hope, too. Like, the next generation coming up is, they're gonna be okay. So that's awesome. All right. Our next meeting is November 4th, 2020. I don't even know if I want it to come, but part of me wants all the days to get over with, but part of me doesn't want to know what it's gonna be like November 4th. But I hope to see you all Wednesday, November 4th. I hope everybody stays healthy. Oh, and look at that guy, I like, I like the new look. I, I just, you know, authentic style, that's what we're going for.
Good job, buddy.
Did he learn from you, Al?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure he's, yeah, he's seen me cut my hair. I, I've been cutting my own hair since I was like probably 15, 16 years old. And, yeah, so it's, it's my fault. Everything he does is my fault.
I thought you were going to say you've been cutting your own hair since his age.
No, I remember I did it one time when I was probably his age, though.
I think it's something that everybody goes through at least once. And if it's not him on his own hair, it's gonna be him on his sister's hair.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, hi, bye. We are officially adjourned.